The public can come and speak on anything you want to speak on that's not part of the agenda tonight. So with that, I'll go ahead and open the citizen forum for anyone that would like to come and speak. I don't have anybody signed up, but if you want to raise your hand, I'll call on you to come up if you'd like to speak. Yes, sir.
Don H. Stevensburg. I want to thank each and every member of the board for everything they do for the county. I also want to take this opportunity to thank Supervisor Campbell for her insight and her forward thinking and advice for the many subjects he has brought to the attention of the board. The board, a board with diversity is strong. A board that is narrow-minded is weak. We need a board that is open-minded and is willing to listen to all the opinions of its constituents. Kathy, your service to the community will be missed, and I want to thank you along with the people that I support. I hope everyone reads today's paper. Culpeper is drying up. Look at Lake Pelham, and I have a photo of Lake Pelham right in front of me. Lake Pelham has dropped close to five feet or more in places. The county now has plans to tap into its well water reserves. If this trend continues, Culpeper County will run out of drinking water. The impact of these data centers in large-scale housing tracts is real. We are just beginning to see their effects. Before you know it, you will see that Jimmy is stuck in the well. Thank you for your time and opportunity to speak to you tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to come and speak tonight? Okay. If not, we'll go ahead and close the citizen forum and move into the agenda. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Move to approve. Second.
Okay. We have a motion from Supervisor Dur and a second by Supervisor Campbell. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Tonight is a very special night. We have a special presentation, and Peggy Place is here tonight. And I've known Peggy probably since the late 70s, early 80s, and I've served with her on the library board for the last eight years. And she's been on the board, I believe, for 21 years? 21 years. And served as chairman for many of those years. How long have you been chairman, Peggy?
Twenty years.
Twenty years as chairman, which is an amazing term. And we're glad to have her here today. And we're going to recognize Peggy for her time and effort to the library board. And John is going to read a resolution into the record, and I'm going to meet you at the podium, Peggy, if you'll come up and present you that resolution.
This time, I'd like to read a resolution of appreciation to honor Peggy Place, which was adopted by the Board of Supervisors this morning. Whereas Peggy Place has announced that she is stepping down from the Culpeper County Library Board effective December 31, 2023, after 24 years of faithful service. And whereas Peggy Place is admired by all her unwavering dedication, leadership, integrity, and hard work. And whereas Peggy began her service on the library board after being appointed in 2000, and whereas she quickly became the chairman of the board, being selected to serve in that role by her fellow board members in 2002, and she continued to serve as chairman for the entirety of her service, right up to her decision to step away from the board. And whereas, in addition to her many years of service on the library board, Peggy served her community in many ways, but her passion for public libraries was first and foremost. And whereas some of her peers have described Peggy as a great chairman, a wonderful boss, a passionate supporter of the library, very hands-on and totally dedicated to the library, and a ball of fire. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Culpeper County Board of Supervisors extends its heartfelt gratitude and appreciation for a job well and faithfully done. And be it further resolved that the Culpeper County Board of Supervisors and county staff wish through this resolution to recognize Peggy Place for all that she has accomplished in her service to our county.
Thank you. You too. You too. I would like to say thank you. And John, especially to you, because always in a panic, I recall, "John, what about blah, blah, blah." And he always knew the answer, and he always returned my telephone calls. He was a lifesaver. So thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, prior to you, a few years ago, I served a couple of years on the library board. It was one of the most smooth-running organizations that I had the privilege to be a part of. And that was back, I think, 2008, '09, '10. And was very grateful, and I also learned something else. In addition to Peggy's service there, she actually ran the Brown Store polling station when there was a porta potty outside and was my little yellow building. And that is true.
That's true. That's a long time ago.
Time flies.
Moving on. General county business tonight. We have one item. The board will hold a public hearing and consider adoption of an amendment to Chapter 15, Weapons Section 15-3 of the Culpeper County Code. Turn this over to John Eggersen, our county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tonight, we've advertised a public hearing to consider a minor amendment, I consider it minor anyway, to Chapter 15 of the county code. And just to summarize what the purpose of this amendment is, the Department of Wildlife Resources has previously issued special hunting permits for the Culpeper Regional Airport, which is intended to minimize the deer population and therefore the deer strike hazards that exist at the airport. And they are now concerned that as we have begun the construction of Greenhouse Road on the east side of the airport and with Beverly Ford Road on the west side, that it will be impossible to comply with current county code. That current code prohibits hunting with a firearm within 100 yards of a primary or secondary highway, which is language that comes straight from the state code. The amendment proposed tonight would just provide an exception that would allow permits to be issued on county-owned properties in general, but primarily, we think this would apply to the airport property. And that is what this amendment would achieve. And again, it's subject to public hearing this evening.
Okay. Any questions or comments before we open the public hearing? Okay. Don, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing for anyone that would like to come and speak. Yes, sir.
Again, Don H. Stevensburg. Many of you who know me know that I do a lot of hunting. And one option you should consider is archery. If you're considering about firearms being close to residential or close to the road, archery is definitely a better option. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to come and speak? Okay. If not, we'll close the public hearing. Open it back up for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the amendment to Chapter 15, Weapons Section 15-3 of the Culpeper County Code to facilitate hunting at the airpark and other county-owned properties by permit.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As I mentioned at the time that we advertised for this, I'm concerned about exempting government from government rules. And so from that, if we, I think a better alternative would be to allow permits so that if others, I mean, this seems to be a very valid case, and I'm all for hunting here. I think we absolutely need to do so. But if it were done in a way that if there were other cases that were non-governmental, where they could have a similar opportunity, that would make more sense to me. That said, to quote a former supervisor, I don't want to let the good be the enemy of the perfect, so I'm going to support the resolution, albeit reluctantly. Or the amendment, sorry.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay. All right. Moving on to planning commission business. The board will hold a public hearing and consider a request by Generation 2 LLC for a conditional use permit. Turn this over to Sam McLaren.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to members of the board. I'm going to let Mr. Germler read the planning commission recommendation into the record, and then I'll do a brief overview.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Board of Supervisors will consider a request by Generation 2 LLC, Juanita Miller, for a conditional use permit to allow the construction and operation of a contractor's office and warehouse with outdoor storage, including truck, equipment, and parking per Section 71A 2.3.5 and 71A 2.3.6 of the zoning ordinance and in accordance with Article 17, use permits of the zoning ordinance. The use is located along the entrance corridor overlay district and in Article 30, Section 33-2, or Point 2, excuse me, requires the proposed use to acquire a special use permit. The property is owned light industrial and is located along Route 1529, James Madison Highway, with the proposed entrance on Joan Drive, which is a private road in the Stevensburg Magisterial District. It's found on Tax Map 34, Parcel 5. The case was considered by the Planning Commission after proper advertising and public hearing held on Thursday, November 9, 2023. The Planning Commission found the request to be in conformance with Article, or Section, excuse me, Section 71A-2-3.5 and Article 71A-2-3.6 of the zoning ordinance and in accordance with Article 17, use permits of the zoning ordinance. Upon motion duly carried, the Planning Commission recommends to the Board of Supervisors by a 7-0 vote that the proposed use permit be approved with the following conditions. Number one, the proposed use of the outdoor storage shall be limited to areas depicted as gravel area, parentheses, not including the area that is proposed in the front of the proposed building adjacent to 1529, as shown on the general development plan dated August 8, 2023, drawn by Carter Run Consulting, as submitted by the applicant. Number two, the proposed use shall not commence operation until the site plan in accordance with Article 20 of the zoning ordinance has been approved. And number three, storage of inoperable or junk vehicles shall be prohibited. Sincerely, Sanford Reeves, Jr.
Mr. Chairman, I won't go into too much detail because that letter was very detailed to explain the proposal, but the Planning Commission did review a properly submitted application by the landowner here for a special use permit or conditional use permit, and both in this case as it relates to the actual zoning and to the entrance corridor overlay, which also needs a special use permit because of how close it is to Route 29 or 1529. The area highlighted in red shows the parcel that the applicant owns and is seeking to build not only an outdoor storage area, but also a building, an office building with garage base. That zoning has been in place for some time, and the applicant's been working with our office to do a site plan approval for that. This kind of shows the area character. It fits, it fits well with what we have seen as far as development in the area. This is, just to familiarize, this is the corner of Beverly Ford Road and Route 1529. This is Southern States Gas Facility. And then you have commercial greenhouse structures to the north. And the applicant will be building their office and garage building here and then have some limited outdoor storage as well. All the agencies that normally review it, as far as VDOT and others, are reviewing it not only for the use permit, but for the site plan specifically. The access will be off of, as the letter mentioned, Joan Drive, which is a private drive behind Southern States, and access off of 676, which is Beverly Ford Road. There's just to the west. Planning Commission did have a public hearing on this matter. The applicant will be retaining some of the vegetation here that will, from the view shed of 29, it will still retain that. It's kind of some, if you drive by there, you'll see it. I mean, it's some, it's not, it's just organic, natural vegetation, scrubby vegetation at best, but they do plan to retain that, and that will help break up the view shed along at least Route 29. The primary focus of that will not be the outdoor storage because that will primarily be behind the building. You'll see the building, and the Architecture Review Committee, which is the Planning Commission, reviewed that last month and gave that a certificate of perpetuiness with a couple of conditions. Last slide that I have just kind of shows the layout of what the applicant did propose and has proposed. The outdoor storage area that we're talking about tonight will be primarily to the rear of the building. They have a stormwater facility there to the east of the building. They do propose some landscaping to supplement the existing vegetation on the 29 side, and the applicant is actually going to extend that vegetation here to the west on their adjacent parcel that gets it closer to Southern States. If you're on Route 29, you will be able to see a limited portion of that site, especially if you're traveling northbound. You can see it through here as well as coming southbound, but you're primarily, you're going to have some existing or new vegetation with the landscaping that they're proposing here. Mr. Chairman, staff didn't identify any real issues with this use permit request. We support it as well as the Planning Commission. We do recommend that the board adopt the use permit with the conditions that the Planning Commission recommended. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant and their representative applicants and their representative are here as well, and they can answer questions, too.
Thank you, Sam and Neil. Any questions for staff, comments? Okay. This project requires a public hearing, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing for anyone that would like to come and speak. Yes, sir.
Don H. Stevensburg. Many times, this board has gone against the advice of the Planning Commission as well as staff, and we have seen you do this many times in the past. Support Culpeper farms in their businesses. Support programs to help farms to continue, farmers continue to farm. One government solution is small-scale solar on 20 acres or less. No new transmission lines like the data centers will require. Small-scale solar is a smart and viable solution to help our farmers. We need to help the farmers in Cedar Mountain as well as those in Catawba. Only approve solar and data centers on existing industrial property with the adequate infrastructures to support them. Board of Supervisors, it's time to be honest with the Culpeper residents, and it's way overdue for the county to hire a third party to review these applications prior to voting on them. I hate to say this, but none of our Board of Supervisors or staff are capable of fully evaluating these applications completely.
Mr. Chairman, just real quick.
Mr. Haid, I hate to interject here, but you're not sticking to the topic. And if you're not going to stick to the topic at hand...
Oh, and Mr. Chairman, just, I think, Mr. Haid, it's the next one you're talking about data centers, right?
Yeah, it's the next one.
That's the next one. This is the other one, so.
Oh.
This is a story.
So sorry. He's all, Mr. Chairman's correct.
I apologize, and I thank you, and I thank you as well. And I reserve back the balance of my time.
Okay. Anyone else would like to come and speak on this issue? Okay. Now I'm going to close the public hearing. Open it up for discussion or entertain a motion.
I do have one question if the applicant is available. The adjacent property between the building and Southern States, is there any planned expansion into that area, or is the plan at this point just to leave it as is?
Okay. Darren Smith with Carter Run. I'm the engineer on the project. There is a possibility to have something that actually, there is, they would like to be able to do something similar on that parcel as well, yes.
Okay. So we could be looking at another building and...
That's correct.
Some additional outdoor storage.
That's correct, yeah. And we'd have to go through the same process and everything, but yes.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions while the applicant is at the podium? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve the resolution to approve conditional use permit in case U 2241-23-1 for Generation 2 LLC for Tax Map Parcel 34.5.
With the Planning Commission conditions.
It's already in the...
Okay, cool.
Resolution.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Case number Z 45923-1. The board will hold a public hearing and consider a request by CLO Digital Infrastructure LLC to rezone 120.85 acres from rural area to light industrial. I'll turn this over to Sam and Neil again.
Dear Chairman Deale, the Board of Supervisors will consider a request by CLO Digital Infrastructure LLC to rezone 120.85 acres from RA rural area to LI light industrial. The applicant is proposing to use the property for a data center campus per Article 7, Section 7.1A 2-2.5, including an area for an electrical substation and associated equipment. The property is located along 1529 James Madison Highway in the Stevensburg Magisterial District. It's found on Tax Map 41, Parcels 107, 109, 110, and 110A. The board will either affirm or reverse the findings made by the Planning Commission as to whether the general location, approximate location, character, and extent of the proposed electrical substation are substantially in accord with the county's adopted comprehensive plan or part thereof in accordance with the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, Section 15.2-2232. The board is also responsible for making a determination as to approval or disapproval of the rezoning. The case was considered by the Planning Commission after proper advertising and public hearings held on Thursday, November 9, 2023. The Planning Commission found that the proposed rezoning request is supportive of general purposes of promoting health, safety, and general welfare of the public in accordance with Section 15.2, 2232 of the Code of Virginia. The proposed utility is substantially in accord with most current comprehensive 2023 comprehensive plan as adopted. Upon motion duly carried, the Planning Commission recommends to the Board of Supervisors by a six-to-one vote that the proposed rezoning request be approved with the acceptance of the submitted proffers dated October 26, 2023, with a suggested revision to Item Number 1, Section G, to state. G. The applicant will make a one-time donation of $25,000 to the county of Culpeper to be divided equally to the Culpeper County FFA program and the Culpeper 4H Club. Such payment will be paid at the time of the certificates of occupancy for the first building. Sincerely, Sanford Reeves, Jr.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, on the screen highlights the property that is seeking to be rezoned to light industrial by CLO Digital Infrastructure for the purposes specifically for a data center. Route 29, 1529 is right here. Knolls Mill Road is right here. The parcels, it's actually three different parcels, I believe, today that are seeking to be rezoned to light industrial. Most of it is zoned RA. Actually, there's a little bit of it today that is zoned R1 today. This map should look familiar to the board. This, the, it's been a discussion of topic lately regarding the technology zones. This is our new consolidated technology zone, and you can see the applicant's proposed rezoning sits squarely inside the existing technology zone, and is one reason why they're before the board tonight asking us to be rezoned for data center usage. The aerial kind of shows the area in general, and I like the aerial just because it shows why the board has probably chosen this area for the technology zone. We have an existing data center usage here, which is Equinex. We have the Swiss facility here, and along this corridor in recent months and years, properties, various properties have been rezoned to light industrial, either by the town and/or county, for the purpose of data centers. You have the town wastewater treatment facility here, and then you have Germana, which is here, and then the Sea Tech School, which is here. So you can see that the area has developed over the years in an industrial and technology, technology mindset for the county. This kind of gives a layout of what the applicant's proposed to date. They show up to three potential buildings on this site with a couple little entrances here off of Route 6. Can't remember what Knolls Mill is at the moment, but Knolls Mill Road itself right here. Of course, there's no access to Route 29. This is a limited access portion here. They do show the proposed substation, which Neil read, as far as the Planning Commission recommendation, they did find it in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan. The developer will need for this type of usage to provide an area for a substation that would be owned by REC eventually. The applicant did do a good job, in staff's opinion, of providing a buffer area to some existing floodplain. There are some identified wetlands on the property, but the applicant stays well with outside those areas that are shown on that property. The applicant has also done a good job, in staff's opinion, of providing some buffer area or landscape buffer area along Knolls Mill Road as well as Route 1529. While it will not completely block the view shed of the data center facility, it will enhance the view shed as you're driving on both corridors. This just kind of gives you an idea of the rendering of what the applicant's proposed, of what the facilities may, may look like. And I will leave it on this screen. Mr. Chairman, I did want to highlight that the Planning Commission did review this in September. They did table it for a couple of months to work with the applicant. The applicant came back with staff's opinion with a stronger proposal than what they had originally after a discussion with the Planning Commission. The applicant did tweak their proffer statement and have done so twice at this point. The latest is to date, actually, they have today's date on there, which is today's board meeting, but if you look at your package in front of you, it was actually executed just a couple of weeks ago on November 21st. Mr. Chairman, they did listen to the Planning Commission. They've listened to staff along the way and inside the proffer statement. And I believe each of you have in front of you kind of a synopsis that the applicant's provided tonight from the applicant, and that does do a good job of summarizing what they're proposing as well as the proffer statement that they're committing to if the board accepts that proffer statement tonight. Just wanted to kind of highlight, in the letter, the Planning Commission recommended a slight change to a cash contribution that was offered by the applicant. The applicant has amended and made that change. The applicant addresses transportation concerns that were brought up along the way, as I mentioned, buffering concerns, lighting, noise, the site access as far as reserving right-of-way for future plans for Knolls Mill. The applicant is also proffering to write turn lane, which they would probably be required to do anyway per VDOT. And then they have proffered the concept plan, which was this particular concept plan here that shows a generalized layout for the development. Mr. Chairman, like we do with any case, this was thoroughly reviewed by our agencies as far as VDOT, so, and Water Conservation District, and in this case, the town of Culpeper for a conceptual utility layout. The town did reach out and respond back, and they do have utilities in place to be able to serve this. Of course, the applicant would need to figure out how to get it there in the future with any site plan if the zoning were to be approved, but there is capacity for water and wastewater to be able to serve this. to be able to serve this facility domestically. The applicant would have, for firefighter purposes, potentially tanks on-site for that. And the applicant can get in detail how they'll plan on cooling the facility, but that's a big topic of discussion when you're talking about data centers. But it would be a water cool facility, but not as a constant use for that water to cool the facility. Air-cooled facility is, I guess, actually air-cooled facility. I apologize, don't want to cause any alarms. Air-cooled facility, that's why you're seeing the need for the power in the substation next door here. So that would be how the, that's why you also see in the slide some generator, which are these white areas here to the side. Mr. Chairman, one thing I just wanted to point out, and this is where staff ended up following. This site has been comp-planned for industrial. And I told the applicant this morning when they checked in to see how the application was coming, that we've shown this since 1964. The county's first comprehensive plan showed this area as industrial. It's been shown in every comprehensive plan since 1964. The technology zones are a fairly new creation for the county, but those have been in place for a number of years. And this has been a part of the technology zone for all those years that it's been created. And that's why the applicant chose this site. The staff supports the location, supports the planning commission's recommendation, and supports the board accepting the proffer statement that the applicant submitted.
Okay, thank you, Sam and Neil. Opening up for questions for staff or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of questions. And Sam, if you could go back to the rendering of the three buildings, it's kind of an aerial view. So that doesn't show anything for the substation that's going to be built next to the facility. Is there, was there any additional screening from 29 to kind of block that from? I know you said it's a row of buffering that, similar to what the Equinex?
Their screening proposed, they're also trying to retain any vegetation that they can along the 29 side. And there is some vegetation there today. They would need to supplement here. The substation is shown just in general. It may or may not take up, obviously, this whole area that's shown on this concept plan. But it is set a good little ways off of Knolls Mill, which is here. And from Knolls Mill, some of the actual building, the data center buildings themselves will probably hide some of that substation area. And it is shown next to an area that, you know, that needs to be protected as far as the floodplain and the wetlands that are over there. As far as staff's concerned, it's probably, if you're going to look at putting one on this site, they chose probably the most ideal location for, to propose a substation. Also gets it a little closer to some of the existing infrastructure, the other Mountain Run substation that's on the other side of the wastewater treatment plant.
So that was going to be my next question. The power to supply this substation would come from the one next to Sea Tech now, is that?
I don't think all that's been worked out, Supervisor Bates, but that my idea, listening from the applicant and from Dominion, is that it could, will most likely come from that direction, yes.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone want the applicant to come up for questions? Okay. All right, if not, this project requires a public hearing. So I'm going to go ahead and open a public hearing now for anyone that would like to come and speak. Yes, sir.
Don H. Stevensburg. So nice, I have to do it twice. Thanks again for the opportunity to speak tonight. Only approve solar and data centers on existing industrial property with the adequate infrastructure to support them. Board, it is time to be honest with the Culpeper County residents. And it's way overdue for the county to hire a third party to review these applications prior to voting on them. I hate to say this, but none of the Board of Supervisors or staff are capable of fully evaluating these applications completely. And none of you have given the Culpeper County residents a complete and comprehensive impact report or evaluation of its negative effects, nor the long-term destruction these projects may have on the surrounding properties or Culpeper County's citizens in general. Culpeper is running dry, according to the photo you saw in today's paper. Did you read today's paper? Lake Pelham is drying up. When are we going to wake up? Who is evaluating the effects when all of these approved data centers are up and running? You can't continue to drain the lake and pump groundwater dry and expect to have drinking water. There needs to be a hold on all data centers to determine if we have water to service them, which includes fire suppression in the future, not just today. But most importantly is power. Where is the power coming from? Where are the lines being run? Two of you Board of Supervisors said that you will not approve any data center until you know exactly where the power lines will be run. Well, your honesty will be tested tonight because there are no confirmed routes for transmissions lines, none whatsoever. Actually, there isn't a, there is not a commitment from Dominion or Rappahannock to provide this data center with power. Studies have shown that Lake Anna Nuclear Power Plant cannot provide the power needed to supply the existing data centers already approved. So, so why would you approve another one? This is what happens when unqualified people are making decisions. We need a third party to fully evaluate the impact on Culpeper, and we aren't thinking the whole thing through. And we can't do it alone. You need help. You can't make an informed vote if you're not informed. Culpeper County residents deserve to have a third party to evaluate the impact of data centers and large-scale solar projects on Culpeper County. Failure to properly evaluate these projects is a dereliction of duty as Board of Supervisors and a violation of your vote of office. Turkey farmers, auto body mechanics, grain farmers, tennis coaches, realtors, and entrepreneurs are experts in their field. But when it comes to long-range evaluations and impact studies on a county and its residents, they fall short. There is nothing wrong with asking for help. I'm sure you all know that. Stop making willy-nilly decisions and seek professional help. Seek advice from experts. Any mini-mini-mo is not an evaluation. As always, please support Culpeper farms in the community. May God continue to bless Culpeper County and its residents. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to come up again.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to come and speak? Yes, ma'am.
Sarah Palmerly, Piedmont Environmental Council. If the board approves CLO Digital Infrastructure tonight, Culpeper will have approved 6.7 million square feet of data centers and 1,500 megawatts of energy load in 2023 alone. To put that in perspective, the North Anna Nuclear Power Plant, which cost over $3.9 billion to build, provides power to 450,000 homes and accounts for 17% of Virginia's electricity, only produces around 1,800 megawatts of power. We already know that our grid is severely constrained by the existing data center load and that in addition to constructing hundreds of miles of new transmission lines through private land, Dominion will need to build new power production facilities, including natural gas peaking plants and utility-scale solar to meet the additional load growth from new data centers and the increased use of AI. These billions of dollars of upgrades will not be paid for by the one industry that is driving this growth, but will instead be shouldered by all rate payers, including residential users. These upgrades will also take time. So it may be the better part of a decade before Culpeper has the power needed for these facilities to operate and therefore generate the tax revenue they have promised. Moreover, these data centers, if built, are unlikely to increase the affordability of living in Culpeper. In addition to skyrocketing energy prices, we are also likely to see skyrocketing land prices so that even if the taxes are technically lowered, the cost of living or farming in Culpeper is likely to increase, as we have seen in Loudon and Prince William. The approval of this project in particular also puts a public water source of exceptional quantity and quality at risk of damage and contamination. The well in question is only a few hundred feet from these facilities and downhill from the generator yards, where hundreds of gallons, if not thousands, of gallons of fuel will be stored. No information has been provided as to how the well will be protected during construction or the catchment system that will be used to intercept potential fuel spills once the generators have been installed. Even though the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality will be responsible for issuing the permits for these generators, given this agency's track record of slow response to serious environmental issues and the limited number of locations where a well of this quality can be established in Culpeper is the potential loss of this public water source, a risk the board is prepared to take. And although we appreciate the inclusion of the Culpeper Fire and Rescue Services, 4-H Club, FFA, and even the Conservation Easement Program and the proffers, these one-time payments will by no means mitigate the full impacts of this campus for the residents of Culpeper. We recommend the board deny this rezoning. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, not, close the public hearing? Open it up for comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to hear from the applicant on the usage of the water and whether or not they have protections in place for runoff from their generators and protection of that well.
Robert Book, CLO Digital Infrastructure. Good evening, and thank you all. Particularly appreciate you guys coming out this time of year where it's important to be with family. To answer your question, Supervisor, the water that the data centers will use is solely for domestic use. So we're talking about bathrooms, sinks for break rooms, things like that. All of the water that's used in the cooling infrastructure of the data center is trucked in. It's a water glycol mix. It's charged, and then set it and forget it is sort of the way to think about it. There's no, the water's all trucked in. There's no use from local resources. And that's why the town can accommodate it with its existing capacity. With regards to the well, the well is currently a county, excuse me.
Town well?
Town well. And it is contemplated in the design of the data center and how we will access water, that we may actually build some infrastructure to connect that to the town system for the benefit of the town. It is currently not connected to the town's infrastructure. That is one potential source of water that will be a sort of social benefit from the development of the site. The, with regards to the generators, the generators are all, this is not the type of generator that you're going to go buy at Home Depot that is designed, you know, for you to wheel out and hopefully you don't spill any gasoline trying to fill it up in your backyard. These are all most likely caterpillar generators, although there are a few competitors entering the space, that are, you know, designed with resiliency in mind. They aren't, there isn't going to be a large storage tank on-site or anything like that. It's all literally similar to the belly tank, is how they're referred to inside the generator. Everything is going to be graded away from the well. The plan is to have everything as sort of concealed within the design of the backup generation yards such that in the event that anything were to go wrong in a refueling situation or anything like that, it would all go away from the, any water sources. Hence, the large setbacks where possible and the lengthy permitting process that's going to be required for backup gens.
Sorry, and also for the fire suppression, water usage for any of that?
Yeah, so that will require some coordination. The, there is enough water with the town to, sorry, let me take a step back. So the way that these buildings are designed is that they are, not to oversimplify and call them modular, but each data hall is its own sort of cordoned-off area. So if you had a fire inside the data hall, you would section that area off, and the water spint cliff would go off. In theory, you could have a cascading event where multiple halls went off or a building went off. The probability of all three buildings being on fire at the same time is regarded as extremely remote. But that is still being contemplated in the way we're thinking about our fire mitigation and suppression. We are already coordinating, are talking, have begun discussions with our neighbors across the street on the other side of Knolls Mill Road about where we could potentially allocate this pumping station to further increase access to water. We intend to have conversations with the town. We are well aware that that will be an impediment, not an impediment, excuse me, a gating item in permitting. But we believe that there are many possible paths, including, as Sam mentioned, the use of tanks on-site for water. Again, not fuel for water.
And Mr. Perryman is here tonight. How many conversations and meetings have you had with him regarding fire, rescue, et cetera?
Half a dozen. Yeah. I have utmost respect for Mr. Perryman and his role in the county, not just in terms of planning, but generally, and in fire and rescue. We think that we've established the correct lines of communication to make sure that we have the best possible solution.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, could you elaborate a little more on these generators? Now, these, I understand they're massive generators. And I would think the number of gallons of diesel fuel that each one of these hold, are they self-contained? Do they have a catch pan underneath of them? If that tank were to rupture, so it's all self-contained for each one of the generators?
Yeah. It's, I'm oversimplifying a little bit, but think about it like a shipping container that contains a generator module. The container's offloaded. There's an interconnection on one side and a fuel spout on the other. And it's kind of its own little thing. And they're each going to be somewhere between 2.5 and 3.5 megawatts, the size of a small box truck.
And the fuel tank is underneath, is built into the generator?
It's all built in. It's one self-contained unit. That's part of why, so there's not going to be, there's not going to be like large pipes running from a large fuel storage source into the tanks. Each generator will have its own small belly tank.
And also have to elaborate a little more on the electrical coming to the facility. And I know we've had discussions about this, but, and you can't really pin down an answer of the exact, what it's going to look like. But, you know, my concern is with the farm across 29 that already has an existing power line running across their property. And I was led to believe through the conversations with staff and their conversations with Dominion, Rappahannock is part of that also, that it would be an expansion of the existing right-of-way or easement, if you would, maybe having to widen it and put bigger poles. I mean, that to me is more palatable than having to run a whole separate easement across a person's farm, where now you've got two monstrosity power lines. Is that the understanding that you've been getting from Dominion on getting power?
Yeah, so if I might just direct you in the little packet, if you go to, after the proffer summary, there's a couple pages on just sort of considerations of development. There's a little more information about water in there as well. So page seven, where it talks about power supply, there's a little graphic on the bottom. So we've, we've had those discussions with Dominion, exactly as you described. Dominion, in order to build a new pole, has to go through numerous regulatory processes. It's all part of rate base. There's ever more scrutiny on Dominion. The threshold for them to do something new and outside of existing rights of way is higher than it's ever been before. But we also independently, my background is in power. We also independently commissioned studies of how electrons flow in and out of Culpeper. And those studies suggest that the most logical point of interconnection is on those existing lines. And so that's POI 1. POI 2, it's the same line, it's just connecting at a slightly different point. And that'll be dictated by Rappahannock and Dominion. It's outside of our control. But part of why we like this site so much is the power flow story to it.
Well, thank you for that. And, you know, again, we've gone down this once before with one that's already a rezoning. And, you know, we were kind of shocked at the 11th hour on the, there was different routes proposed, which wasn't what was brought up during the presentation of the last applicant. So I just want to make sure we're clear on that, that, you know, based off of what you've shown us.
To the best of my knowledge, that is the most likely path that things will take. When Dominion wants to do a new project, they often have to suggest alternates. It's usually kind of like a foil for their preferred plan. I can't
with all of our projects that are in the works, kind of giving their perspective on how they're planning on bringing power into this technology zone that we have cordoned off?
Yeah. So we, is this still, okay, there we go. We still, we, we started those discussions because of the changes to the technology zone with us kind of shrinking where we're looking to attract these. Part of the advantage of that is it brings one solution to one area. As we've said, Dominion has previously mentioned that we already are in a spot where we're going to be needing additional power. Currently, so give some example, currently, every year Dominion has to look across their entire footprint of if there's any issues. That happens yearly, it's pretty, it's very routine. This year, they have proposed only going on existing right-of-way. The, the preference is to go adjacent or within existing right-of-way. That's obviously a little bit more palatable. The, the one advantage and Dominion's been thankful is that we're trying to take a proactive approach to that. And that first meeting, they were very, we, we were able to work with a little bit higher up than perhaps applicants can get to, so we're able to work with transmission as well as economic development. And we had a very positive meeting of saying like, this is what's here, this is what's coming, you know, this is what's been proposed, including like Cielo. This is what's left. Here's a guesstimate of what that would require. What does that look like? So they can plan, the best thing is we don't want to be planning this project at a time. We want to plan this comprehensively. And Dominion was very thankful for that conversation. They're also thankful that we're trying to take a proactive approach, as we did with the AWS project. One note, they, they have to show the SEC every constructible route. So even if the route makes sense to 0% of the people, from a logic standpoint, they still have to show the SEC, we thought about this. This is, you know, we built, we, we've built it out, but it wouldn't, you know, this is why this other plant works. So there's a potential that they will show some plans where everyone goes, that doesn't seem as logical as the other one. That's still always possible, but they're appreciative of that. Dominion was appreciative in that first meeting of, hey, we're trying to take a proactive approach to planning this out.
And they seem hopeful that we can maintain the current right-of-ways that come across 29 from the Gordonsville Remington line and?
They seem hopeful that we could either enter adjacent.
Okay. And that we may be able to do this in fairly tight construction rather than projects every five to seven years?
One issue with the SEC process is that Dominion can only overbuild, quote unquote, but so much because that does, if, if Dominion builds for something that doesn't happen, then, then that gets pushed onto the ratepayers. So there is some leeway, but for example, the Gordonsville Remington line currently has, the, the, like that actual right-of-way has availability for upgrades without having to change the poles. So they, they can do, there is some leeway and then they can show, especially if the county, as we did with AWS where we passed the resolution, where the county says, you know, we want this and we want it a little bit beefier because we know Dominion's going to be back to you in five years, so let's try to make this a little bit more seamless. So they were appreciative of that as well.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't get the opportunity to ask the gentleman who was up here before. You mentioned that you have self-contained units for your generators. What is your total fuel capacity for all of your generators?
I haven't selected the exact generator yet, so I can't, can't tell you, but it's, it's a, it's hard to convert it to gallons. It's like 2.4 million decathermes and I'm trying to think of what that is in gallons of fuel, but it's, it's a...
Come on, Underwood.
How can it get me to do decathermes to gallons at eight o'clock at night?
The thing is, is that, the, yeah, my, so the way it works, let me just put it this way. It's about, it's about eight to 10 hours of fuel per unit self-contained. The idea is, is that the, the generators can run long enough to sustain a orderly transition of A, the, the processing outside of the data center and B, the mechanical equipment of the data center, because the worst thing that could happen, not the worst thing, but a bad thing that could happen would be if you didn't have the generators, the heat that comes off of the servers would create, like what's known as a thermal runaway event. And so the cooling wouldn't keep up and then that's how you end up overheating and destroying a bunch of equipment.
Did you just mention it was eight to 10 pounds per gallon? Is that what you just said?
No, eight to 10 hours of fuel per unit.
But you can't tell me how big the fuel tanks are on your generators that you?
I don't have, I don't have a model number of a generator yet.
Okay. You mentioned that you were talking with the town and you may be involved with them hooking the well up to their facility, but you haven't gone any further than having that discussion, correct?
Yes, the town concluded that it was premature to have that discussion to its full conclusion without the rezoning or the site plan approved. So it'll be part of the comprehensive permitting and phasing. Also described further in the project narrative in front of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I do have a question for staff. So with the proffers for this, this light industrial use is the only use that can be on this property?
Yes, ma'am. The way they, they've structured the proffer statement is they've committed to the renderings and the concept plan, which is for a data center facility.
And is there any kind of timeline of limitation on this will be built within so many years?
The facilities themselves? No, there's, there's nothing in there about decommissioning or rebuilding on the proffer statement.
Okay. Because I'm, I'm wondering with the power constraints and if power isn't going to be available because there's just not enough to be available, what happens to this facility? Is it just a sitting waiting to be a data center sometime in the future or is there some point where it would revert back to any light industrial use or would it revert back to?
The way the proffers are structured, they would sit to be a data center, but someone could always come back before the board and petition to amend the proffers and just be like a rezoning process.
Okay.
Well, for me, I'll just say that I appreciate the Cielo group coming and trying to generate commerce and business for Coal Pepper. I mean, I'm proud, I'm proud of what we've done the last six or seven years on this board of preparing and trying to bring technology to Coal Pepper. And we put a lot of work and effort into it and some have been, the majority have been for it, some have been against, same way with the public. Sam, how, how long did you say that this area has been in the comprehensive plan for industrial?
Since the first comprehensive plan for the county, which was, looks, I found today was 1964.
Okay. So we've really put some energy into it the last six or seven years to get where we are now. And we have condensed the technology zone. We have taken quite a bit out of the Lover's Lane area. We have turned down a project in Brandy or Elkwood and we have condensed the technology park to where we think it should be on McDevitt Drive, and in this case, right around the corner on Brax Corner, which is on 29. And with condensing it, I'm all for that. Once we fill up this space, which is eight million square feet, I believe, or somewhere around that, eight or nine million square feet, I don't want any more either. But I'm proud of what we've done to get where we are now, to where we will have technology because Coal Pepper needs it, in my opinion, because we have a lot of expenses coming up and we're just starting with school, school construction at over $100 million is what we're going to be appropriating in the next year or so for a new middle school refurbishment and expansion, for an elementary school, and we need several more. So Mr. Perryman back there with fire and rescue is working on an immediate plan for fire and rescue, a medium plan and a long, long-term range plan for fire and rescue, which is going to be millions of dollars. And technology is going to help complement us on our budget, it's going to help supplement the budget and it's going to bring in revenue that we sorely need. There's roads out there that need to be improved. We're started, started a couple of those projects or they're going to be starting pretty soon. There's many more that needs improvement. And there's a lot of people here that are not here tonight that live paycheck to paycheck that if we have to raise our taxes in the future to provide, to, to generate money for these projects, they're going to see it and it's going to impact their lives. And those people are not here because in my district, 50% of the people that live in my district commute, so they're just getting home. And many of them don't even know who the board of supervisors are or the town council. They don't follow government. They're not here to speak, but raising taxes to 80 or 90 cents in the future is going to impact their lives and their families. So I thank you all for coming and, and being here tonight to bring commerce to Coal Pepper.
Mr. Chairman, I, I echo the, the fact that I think Coal Pepper has done a good job in reining in on where we want these data centers, knowing the impact of where the electrical grid will go if we allow these to proliferate across the, the county, especially in the Stevensburg District, since it has the longest-running high-capacity transmission line in the county. It's good that we've limited it and it's also good that, in my opinion, that we've gotten the applications kind of a one and done to the fact that we know what the imprint is, we know what the power requirement is and Dominion can react accordingly instead of every five to 10 years us upgrading lines. Never in my life did I think that we would do it so quickly, but at least these are in the right place, which in turn allows us to have our new schools and keep our tax rates low. So with that, I would move to approve the draft ordinance of approval for case Z459-23-1.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I want to say that I don't disagree with any of the comments that you made here and I will say that I came in here tonight thinking that I was probably going to support this application, but if I can't be told the number of gallons that are being used or will be on the site for the generators that are in place, number one, that bothers me. Number two, I don't know how many of you are aware, but Ardent Mills was powered down at least once this summer that I'm aware of, and that's an industry that's been here for a right good while and is transferred from one to the other. When you have to shut them down so that you can keep the air conditioner on in the houses and what I'm hearing about the power, I think we need to study this a little bit longer. So I'm not going to support this motion here tonight because I don't know that we've got enough information to make this decision. With that, I'll be quiet. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the work on behalf of the applicant. I appreciate the work that has been done by the Planning Commission and members of this board. Frankly, members of this board have put much more effort into this than I have and they're the ones who asked the questions tonight and they have different opinions, but I sincerely thank them for the effort that they've put in. Staff recommends it, the Planning Commission recommends it overwhelmingly with one dissent. I believe that it is good for the county and good for the tax base, therefore I will be supporting the motion.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I've, I've thought long and hard on this and I have spent countless hours going over the, the application, talking with staff, talking with the president of our association, and I've said from the very beginning that everything in moderation. And I'm, I'm pleased that we've come together and we've shrunk the technology zone, that we've, you know, kind of sent a message that, hey, we don't want to end up looking like Northern Virginia. With that said, this property being, I think, one of the last buildable lots in the technology zone and the information that's been provided to me when it comes to the power supply to it and that we're not going to be using a, a water cooling system, the only water that we use would be for domestic uses in the building, I'm going, I'm going to support the, the motion. And, and again, I appreciate the proffers that have been presented. One in particular is when we're talking about the conservation portion of it. Going forward, I'm hoping that we can take some of the revenues that we're going to be generating over the next 10 years and allocate that money, a portion of that money, to preserve in the rural characteristics outside of the town environments when it comes to the, the county, the, the rolling hills and farmlands of Coal Pepper that we all enjoy. So like I said, with that, with that, I'll, I'll support the motion.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. All, all in favor of the motion, signify I'm saying aye. Please raise your hand. Aye. Okay. All opposed? Okay. Zellus, I believe that's five, two with Mr. Rosenberg and Kathy not agreeing. Okay. Any other comments? Entertained a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, we're adjourned.